The things we need to do to save money and time and to create more joyous communities in those areas is also exactly how we need to handle the climate crisis. With respect to transportation and housing, and these are, this is like one of the biggest systems of opportunity really that there is. How do we let people have a more affordable experience? And in the US, we pay this incredible price for a car centric sprawling system financially. This is one of those things that pays you back. It pays back, public transit pays back, walkable cities pays back, bikeability pays back. The reason we have a monomodal system is because we allocate the rights, the privileges, the money and the space to a single mode of transportation. The best way to understand our housing policy, go to Foothill Parkway and at about like 9:00 AM on a weekday morning. And just sit there and just, and watch the cars, watch the tens of thousands, 20,000, 40,000, 50,000 cars coming into Boulder every day to go to jobs. And that's our housing policy.
Hello Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Bogren and for episode 38, I spoke with Ryan Schuhart, who is a Boulder resident that is running for city council this fall. Ryan is a member of Boulder's Transportation Advisory Board and his campaign is focused on transportation solutions as our best way to mitigate the climate crisis. People have asked me who I am endorsing this election cycle and I'm excited to announce that I am endorsing both Nicole Spear and Aaron Brockett for mayor. Because ranked choice voting makes it, makes it sensible and advantageous for people to endorse multiple candidates. However, for city council, I have not decided who I will endorse yet because I'm unfamiliar with many of the candidates. And I want to interview them before making final decisions. With one exception, I am endorsing Ryan Schuhart with enthusiasm and without hesitation. When Ryan talks about transportation solutions, it makes me hopeful that our city can become the kind of green, multimodal, affordable and welcoming city that I believe is possible. This summer, Ryan and I wrote an opinion piece for the Boulder Beat titled, "A Positive Vision for Housing at the Boulder Airport", which imagines the possibilities for beautiful neighborhoods on that city-owned property. A link is available in the show notes. In our conversation here, we discussed the Transportation Advisory Board, the Core Arterial Network, e-bike incentives, his Carlight family, housing, and discussed the many reasons why we should care about reforming our transportation policies. I hope you enjoy this conversation with Ryan Schuhart.
Hello, Ryan. Welcome to Sharing Boulder. I wonder if you could start by introducing yourself.
Hi Philip, it's great to be here. Can I first just say that I love your podcast. I'm a podcast listener. I discovered it before I discovered you as a colleague. And I just love the idea about covering really important topics, what I think are important topics around making our world better, but through the lens of Boulder and through hearing from our community members. So I love it. I've, I've, so I've been, I've been a listener for, since the beginning. I also love your new song and I like the chime about the residential pedestrian district. And I enjoyed the discussion with Nicole Spear that you just put out. You've both got into some great stuff. Including the need to pay council a living wage so we can improve representation and the quality of our, of our leadership. So in any case, you've had such a great show and great leaders and I'm honored to be here.
Well, thank you. I, any evidence that I get that suggests anyone who's listening to this at all is really, really welcome. I had a, I had a, a college kid come up to me at a, at one of the open houses for the, the airport community conversations. And he introduced himself to me and said he was a big fan of the podcast. I was like, yes, this is great. He's an economics major in, in Denver. So that's a, that's a big boost to making this feel like it's worthwhile. So thank you. I guess, I guess if, if you've been listening to this before we, we met, that means that was, that was before this podcast blew up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know when I tuned in. It was soon after I moved here. I moved here in the end of 2019. So, but yeah, I've enjoyed it.
Nice. Cool. Well, thank you. Yeah. So, well, I guess we should get right into, you're running for city council and what are you doing that for?
Right. So I think, I think I took you off track maybe just to sort of do a quick introduction and then I can maybe take both of those together. So I am originally from Southern Oregon and moved to Boulder in 2019 with my wife to raise our two small girls. They're now five and seven, in a place where we could have a car light lifestyle near the mountains and be a part of building a community for the next generation. And we are, we're outdoor people. We're climbers and skiers and campers and backpackers and all that stuff. And we, we really had an idea that we wanted to choose the best place in the world that we could do those things in, in a way that could, we could be as car free as possible. So we chose, it took us a few years to find that it was Boulder and then suddenly it was clear that it was. So I've professionally worked as a, as an advocate and an advisor for climate action. For almost 20 years, I was awakened to the climate crisis while a Peace Corps volunteer. And since then I've started and led a number of different initiatives around, I guess you could say movement building in ways to bring together science, technology, policy and equity. And I spent most of my career first at a place called Business for Social Responsibility and then at a place called Calstart that are both pioneers in climate action and with Calstart, but transportation specifically. So today I run a small consulting firm called More Mobility, which seeks to help create better transportation options that also build climate resilience. And for the last little more than two years, I've been serving as an appointed member of the city of Boulder's Transportation Advisory Board. And so to, to turn to why am I running? The setup is that my experience with the board has just really strengthened my thinking that building more walkable, bikeable, transit-rich communities is both one of the most important things we can do for climate resilience that really is within our grasp and also a way to just make life better. So I have known that for some times in general. That there's just so much potential with, with transportation. And I say transportation, but it's, it's really transportation and land use and land use includes housing. There's just so much potential to, to make our lives better by increasing our options and the diversity and our choices in those, I guess those sectors. And the things we need to do to save money and time and to create more joyous communities in those areas is also exactly how we need to handle the climate crisis with respect to transportation and housing. And these are, this is like one of the biggest systems of opportunity really that there is. So I'm a, I'm a policy professional who has become interested in this over the years and then more drawn to local government, which I think has some of the greatest untapped potential to do the work. And I hadn't really contemplated running for elected office until recently. But the, the short story is last year, sometime, I don't know, last summer maybe, I found myself just kind of telling myself that I wanted to help make transportation and climate action an election issue this season, this, 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 this campaign session. Just as a, as a resident, as an active resident and, and to do what I could to, to encourage candidates to be competing on, on, on these issues. And as we got closer, I just, you know, I had kind of heard different people saying things in different ways, just to kind of nudge me to think about getting in the race myself. And ultimately I decided that would be the best way to do it. So I come with, as somebody who wants to work on some really targeted, although I would say pretty, pretty fundamental to our, our way of life in Boulder, areas, areas where I bring some expertise. And it may not be the most commonplace that a candidate is coming from, but I feel that as a resident and also as a parent raising two kids here that I, that I want to grow until they're adults. This is exactly the kind of thing we need to focus on, this, this area. And it's an area where we need a lot of strength in our community leaders. And the other thing, and I'll just wrap up here in a minute, but just to kind of generalize this a little bit more is I, I think I bring a pretty diversified experience from the policy world, including with local government, but also at state and federal and other city levels. That gives me some tools and experiences to, to bring. So that the, the anatomy and physiology, if you will, of the city government is, is pretty understandable to me. And, and so I know the business of legislating. I know how to write policy language. I know how to hone in on real levers for change in government. And I know how to negotiate politics and make things happen. So.
You've probably written grants and understand what different funding mechanisms are and that kind of stuff too.
Exactly. Yeah. I would say, I would say funding and investments is, yeah, that's kind of one of the big, the biggest areas of, of, of policy. So, so that's what I bring. And then I'll just close by saying, as, as part of this, I've learned that I bring with, with an expertise in transportation and climate, a set of wider values and approaches that can help to improve safety, livability and inclusion and, and create kind of a framework to think about other issues through those lenses, which I'd be very happy to talk about.
Well, that, that's super cool. I, I've been interviewing mayoral candidates and other city council candidates. And the transportation as kind of a central theme organizing principle has, has not really surfaced. You know, it's kind of secondary to housing or, or climate, climate issues. And well, housing in particular, but yeah, this, this is really close to my heart because as, as you know, I, I live without a car for the most part. My wife has a car. She drives. But I, I get myself and my kids around using the bus and using bikes and our feet. And you know, I would love it to be MoBetta because it's, it, there's, there's a, it's a, we live in a car, a, a city handed over to cars. You know, and there's lots of parking and there's lots of traffic and there's lots of intersections that aren't very safe for humans. And so cheers. Go, go Ryan. This is great. So yeah, well, I guess, I guess one thing I would love to explore a bit is your role in the Transportation Advisory Board and what you've learned through that experience of being on the board and, and what, what you guys have accomplished and what, what's next for TAB? And, and yeah.
Great. So I, I was appointed to the Transportation Advisory Board in 2021. And the, the TAB, as you can abbreviate it, is one of several boards in the city. I think we have around 20. I'm not sure. That's right. And we were a five-person board. Most of the members are appointed for five years. So it's, it, it's a pretty long tenure. And essentially the, the job or the mission is to advise city council and essentially the city, city administration and specifically work with the planning board to, to give advice, advisory on transportation issues. It's a, it's not a, it's not a regulatory or you could say a quasi judicial board like the planning board, which is actually deciding things. It's advisory. So our, our powers are, while I think we're important, that, that what we do, it's, it's limited, you know, as far as we don't, we don't make final decisions. In practice, we meet monthly and we hear things from the transportation department staff largely, but also other departments that in the city that make transportation policy. So for example, Community Vitality is in charge of a lot of parking, the planning, the whole planning regime, including the planning board does a lot with, with basically transportation and land use. So we, we see a lot of different things. And then the airport, the airport process that you and I are involved with. So it's, it's a lot around those different aspects of transportation very broadly. And we mostly work as a board, just meeting and you know, because of rules, the sunshine rules, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't have the scope to, to go do a lot outside of public meetings, which means we don't do a lot of individual enterprising work. It's mostly we meet and vote and the current board composition since I've been on has been very interested in, in helping to move beyond the car centric status quo and to, and to make life more, or transportation, I have to say, more inclusive and safer and diverse. So a few things I would say that I, that I've been excited about, that I've been involved with is one, we have a priority of the city council, of this current city council in their two-year work plan, which is the, the framework that defines their priorities. And they have, I believe, 10, 10 items on this two-year work plan. One of those is a new bike weight system and it's called the Core Arterial Network, otherwise known as CAN. And I, I and some of the other TAB board members and, and a couple of people on council and a few other advocates helped to really get this thing going. And I think it's incredibly exciting and a good example of the kind of work that city council can do. In the, as far as legislating, that's very productive. And so this, this, among other things, is a multi-year process of, of plans for, for multiple corridors that's defined or, or at least re-refocused, funding priorities in terms of how this, how the transportation department does its work. And it's been, been in a way that's very collaborative with the, the department. And I, I just think it's an incredibly exciting initiative. So that's one thing that the TAB has helped with. Another one is the e-bike incentives. We just, this took a year to get going, but I helped to get the, among others, to, to advocate that the city use some money that it receives from, from federal funding to give e-bike incentives to citizens. E-bikes are one of the most exciting technologies out there, whether it's for, you think about climate or affordability or just making people's lives better, but they're still expensive for people who, and for people who aren't kind of like bike nerds. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's a lot to try to spend a few thousand dollars on e-bikes. So in any case, we just closed a round of, of voucher incentives to the community that had a planned 200, about 200 vouchers and we received 12, about 1,200 requests. So just, there's an incredible demand for this and we're planning a second round in the fall. And I would love to start talking about a third one.
Say that again. You had 1,200 requests for 100 vouchers?
About 200, about 200 were expected. It wasn't an exact number because there's different voucher amounts. So sort of a, yeah, 1,200 over 200.
Are you cutting checks yet? Or the city's cutting checks yet for those vouchers?
That's a good question. I'd have to, I'd have to check in to see where they are in the process.
That's kind of like happening now though, right?
Yeah. Yeah. That round's closed and the people are, yeah, getting their bike, yeah, getting the bike sorted.
I, I love that. The, the notion that e-bikes are expensive is, is kind of cuts both ways, right? Cause if you can move your life to an e-bike, then it's way cheaper than a car. And this is a fantastic benefit if you can make that work. But the problem is that like you, it's, it's hard to like make a cold switch. So like you kind of, most people are going to need to have a car and an e-bike before they can get rid of a car, if they can get rid of a car. And so the notion of subsidizing that is, is super cool because yeah, I mean, I think, I think when people can figure out that e-bikes are pretty, you know, can, can do a heavy lift on, on transportation needs, it could really save people a lot of money. So.
Yeah, hear, hear. And I'm glad you said that Philip, because I, I, if I had heard somebody use the word expensive with e-bikes, I, I would have normally chimed in to rebut with something along the lines of what you just did. So I couldn't, couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah. Like for example, I, I've often said that the most, the most I've ever spent on maintenance for a bike in one, in one service was $400, which is no small chunk of change to most people. But like, if that was your largest bill for, for a car repair, man, you'd be, you'd be happy, you know? Cause sometimes you, you walk out with four-digit bills, you know, for your, for fixing that transmission or the, the timing belt or whatever it is. So hey, I wanted to kind of, you, you talked about the Core Arterial Network, Arterial Network, CAN. And that sounds good, but like, I don't really understand what it means in terms of like, what am I going to notice that's different? Am I going to be able to like, for example, travel north, south through the middle of Boulder someday on a bike without, without impediments?
Great. It's a great question. And the, there's a lot of forms of this question, which is like, like, what are you trying to achieve on Quince? Or like, you know, so not, not to, to take it back too far, but I think the, the big idea for, from the standpoint of somebody who's wondering like, what, what, who cares? Like, what's all this about? Why, why do we care about, about, about just like bikes on whatever corridors? Is that the, what, what's at stake is the chance to move from a system that is designed for a single mode of transportation to get you everywhere conveniently, with the big asterisk by conveniently, because it's not always convenient. But to be able to go from your driveway to any other driveway and any other place in a car.
How about, let's say, how about, let's say from your front door to some, to some other front door? Instead of driveway. Let's, let's stop using car centric language.
No, thanks. You're right. You're right. A hundred percent right. Let's not assume a driveway. And, and to think about changing from, from a monomodal, a monopoly system with one product to, to one that has choice. And so choices meaning bikes, bikeability, but not just bikeability, but transit. And, and how do you do that? Well, the way that it's worked for cars is we, we've created an entire network or an entire system in the way that you, with the cell phone, have a network that you assume, that works everywhere. Cell phones aren't great because they work on like one corridor, a few places, but it's because you have an entire grid that you, that you depend on. And that's what's made cars work, that you have this, you have this entire grid with, with arterials and feeders and a little, little, little streets to get everywhere you need to go. And including all the way up to many people's driveway and into their garage. It was sort of the imagery I was thinking about with the driveway. Which, which for a lot of people, they would say that, that's what makes it work for me. So the idea is like, we would have to create that equivalent for other, other transportation modes. If, if you want to compare them like for like and say like, I like biking or I like transit. So the, the Core Arterial Network is essentially a, an upgrade of, at the level of like, bringing, making the system itself have some significant improvements. So there's a map of the Core Arterial Network and includes, I forget the number of streets, but it's, it's some of the main arterials. So arterial is in the name. These are our roads that, that go pretty fast and then have a lot of complex interactions happening with, happening in them. A lot of driveways and intersections, which is where, it's one of the most dangerous places to be outside of a car. It's where most of the crashes occur. So, so Iris in North Boulder is one of them. Baseline, 30th, some improvements on Folsom and there's a couple of more. So it's a few of these corridors that together significantly improve the, I guess, the granularity of the grid. Then we'll need to keep going and do more.
Yeah. Awesome. So, so those four plus maybe others are kind of targeted for protected bike lanes, for example.
And. Yeah, exactly.
Reconfigured intersections and there'll be standards related to what those intersections look like and how protected those bike lanes are and whatnot.
Yeah, exactly. And they're going, they're, they're phasing it in a different, in sequence. So baseline, I think was really the first one. There's been improvements happening down there. Iris is going to, there's a community process happening soon. My impression is that there was an understanding from city council that commissioned this work essentially, that these would be, this would be represent physically protect, protected infrastructure between bikes slash people and cars. In practice, there's, you know, the, the, there's a community engagement process and staff will, will go talk to the community. And you know, hopefully we'll get as much, as much physical fortified strength with that protection as possible.
Awesome. I, I appreciate that. I, I'm cynical about the, the, the white plastic pylons that are going in all over town. Cause I, I see them as, as both future garbage, which will be in our landfills quite shortly. And also like completely irrelevant with respect to physical protection, you know? But anyways, I gave Alex Weinheimer grief about that a year or two ago. Anyways, they're, they're, they're very good for visibility, which I appreciate. Okay. So you wanted me to ask you about how you and your family get around. So tell me about that.
I'd love to. Yeah. So as I said, we, we had a vision of moving here and, and living car light. So we, we do have a car. We have a Subaru, but it sits in, it sits at home most of the time. So I would say nine out of 10 trips or better, we take as a family by bike. So my wife and I, we both have cargo bikes that we used to get around, including with our kids. I'm in charge generally of the school runs and I do that pretty much every school day out of the year, even in, even in the deep winter. And we have a little bit of a commute for school too. We're able to do most of it on multi-use paths, which, which makes it, makes it okay. And then when the, when it gets cold, I, we, I change the bike from a cargo, a long tail, you know, like a stretch bike, which by the way, has a little house thing that sits over it, a little vinyl thing to, to keep it warm. But when it, when it gets slick, I switch that out to a more of a conventionally sized e-bike that just has big tires. And then I pull the kids in the trailer and I find that that's, that, that's really workable in the winter time. Because if it's slippery and if I were to dump my bike, then the kids are still safe.
And yeah, totally.
I, you know, not everybody would like feels great about being out in, you know, zero degrees with their kids. But you know, it really is, once you get away from the cars, if you, if you can manage this on a multi-use path and you, the kids, I mean, our kids love it. So we figured out some little tricks like, you know, first of all, they listen to stories, you know, like, like with the, with the Bluetooth speaker. And they have a little sleeping bag cover they wear. And I figured out this, this little trick to put, put boiling water in a couple of aluminum bottles. And then you put those in like a, a little soft lunch, lunch pack kind of a thing with a little blanket in there. And then it's like this little cube heater that just goes and keeps them warm. And they love it. Like I think the people that don't do this might think, oh, it must be so hard for the kids, but like they, they truly love it. So I, I, more, more people are doing this. More parents are out there in the, in the, in the winter. And I, my impression, this is not scientific, this is just what I observed, but the, when you're out there and it's really cold in the winter with, like with kids, it's the e-bikes that are the vehicle, that are the bikes that, that, that are more resilient. And so these, this technology is really allowing people to stay comfortable and just in control throughout more types of elements. And it's incredibly exciting. And there's any parents that want to nerd out on this or, or borrow a bike to try or whatever. It is one of my favorite topics.
Yeah. David, David Adamson asked me one time how I approached people who are idling their cars to talk about not idling. And I told him, I don't ever do this because it's like an emotional trigger for me. I don't think I'm very, I would be very well behaved. And, and the, the reason I bring this up is because probably the worst offenders are parents dropping their kids off at schools. You know, you pull up into the, into the drive and you, you, you go three miles an hour as you proceed up to the front where you can drop your kids off. And the amount of pollution, I mean, if you were to just sit on the sidewalk there and breathe in all the exhaust that gets spewed out every morning and afternoon at these schools, it's really noxious and discouraging. And so yeah, I think anything we can do to, to, to decrease the amount of exhaust we're pumping into the air in front of our kids' schools, I think is amazing.
Exactly right.
Well, cool. I, I appreciate that story because you know, I've, I've had all kinds of, you know, it brings to mind all kinds of things I've done with. Well, cool. I uh, I uh, appreciate that story because, you know, I've I've done had all kinds of, you know, it brings to mind all kinds of things I've done with with my kids. I've had I've had cargo bikes with kids on the back and trailers with kids buckled into the 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 little frame with two extra wheels. And I love the, I love the crash resilience of a of a trailer if I if I slip on snow or something like that. But um, okay, um, so yes, um, I'm, you you gave me an outline before this, and so I'm kind of just reading what's next. And the next one was a little bit long, but um, so you are a climate advocate, you are concerned about climate change, and your focus has centered on transportation. And so why do we care about transportation? What does it have to do with polar bears?
So I I uh, I'm happy to talk about this, uh, because I I think a lot of people know me for transportation, but like, I I'm pretty new in my in my career to thinking about transportation. I didn't, I didn't study transportation planning. I didn't, I didn't have some awakening when I was younger that like, transportation is where I want to be. Rather, I've, as I've been working um, to kind of follow the thread of of climate action in terms of both reducing greenhouse gases and building at active or capacity, or you could say just resilience. And I and keep asking the question like, like, why? Like, how do we like, why? And how do we, how do we do more? I've just found that transportation is one of these places that there's just, it's just so important. And um, so so one reason is because transportation, as I said before, like, you have to kind of include land use, which also includes housing. This is one of the 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 biggest systems we have that that will, that gives us a chance in the very near future with with some technology, but really just with policy, with with the strong focus on policy, gives us a chance uh, to make a significant impact on on decarbonization and adaptation. And as I said, also, like, one of the things we know is that even if you didn't care about climate action, this this stuff is worth doing anyway. And so when I say this stuff, in my mind, I'm, I guess I would summarize it as something like people, a a system of uh, or a community that is people first with with transportation that is safe by design, where people have the the choice of multiple kinds of transportation options that work together and they're able to live near where they want to go. And what's on the table with this is is so profound. So I'd maybe just a few things to 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 say. One is affordability. In most political surveys and just um, the the work that that we have to do in in I don't know, the public servants do and care about uh, that advocates of of making the world a better place are are really concerned with is like, just how do we let people have a have a more affordable experience? And in the US, we pay this incredible price for a car centric sprawling system financially. So for people that have a median income or less, we as, I mean, this is Americans now, we 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 pay a um, I forgot, I don't have to share off the top of my head, but it's a very high share compared to Europeans. And the lower you are in income, the the much higher that share gets to. And it's and it spikes and it really causes stress with people.
The transportation costs or are you talking about like total cost of car ownership or something like that?
Your 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 total transportation costs, so like inclusive of of everything. So that would be the total cost of your your car ownership, plus whatever other transportation. In the US, like, that's 95% of that is car ownership for for people. And but then, more importantly, the transportation and housing affordability are actually connected and part of the same system. So for example, if you live in an urban core that has relatively good bikability and transit, it tends to be more expensive in terms of either home prices or rental rental prices with lower, but you have lower transportation costs. And this is, you know, think about the walk score that most people are familiar with. Generally pay higher, you pay more for a higher walk score. And then as you move out of the city, you you tend to have lower home prices, but transportation costs go up. So if you're really interested in affordability, this system of transportation and housing is one of the, I mean, it's basically the biggest kind of area that that people spend money on. And um, you, there's a accessibility is a word that has different meanings, but it's 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 a, one of those meanings is it's a kind of a modern term of art that that sort of combines those things and it it asks from a policy perspective, like, what do people actually need in terms of getting the things that they need to get or getting the things to them? And you shouldn't assume it's a car, you shouldn't assume it's anything. It really depends on the person and their situation and what they need to do. And usually you can, you can do it in a much more efficient way than, a cost efficient way than than we do it. Um, and there's a really good resource called the um, the HT Index, the Housing Transportation Index, that has a map of this around the US. And it and it, you can look, Boulder's in there, a lot of, a lot of towns are in it. And it shows that if you have, say, like, higher than 45% of your combined expenses on housing and transportation, it's unaffordable. Boulder, there's different ways of looking at it, but it's probably around half, half um, of residents in Boulder would be considered to have an unaffordable situation with housing and transportation. And we should be really clear that this is not a reason of physics or some other fundamental reason we do it. It's that it's that when you, when you create zoning that 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 causes low density and sprawl, you 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 create a requirement, and then and then don't fund public transit, you create a requirement that everybody has a two to three ton personal carrying device around. And it's very energy intensive to to move, move that. And the final thing, just on affordability to wrap it up, is that one of the best charts in um, the most important document on climate science, which is the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, that does their state of the science every few years. And they just had their synthesis, their big report out this last April. One of the best charts they have shows all of the main uh, measures, like the key measures for for mitigating climate change. And they have a table of 60 measures. And it's it's all from all different sectors and industries. But they they show it by cost. And um, many of the measures have negative costs, meaning you spend the money and it and it pays you back. This is one of those things that pays you back. It pays back, um, public transit pays back, walkable cities pays back. Bikeability pays back. And so um,
Is this because there's like fewer healthcare costs, like, like there's savings in in your health and?
Yeah, that's part of it. The, I mean, the first, the first part of it is the direct cost, that that it is just, it is directly expensive to have, to to own a car or own multiple cars in a household. And then uh, for the city to deal with the services and the infrastructure to deal with all that. But secondly, yeah, there's a whole bunch of um, of ripple effects that include the need for literally highway patrol, um, you know, enforcement that is focused on the transportation system um, with with hospitals and healthcare and on down the list. It's it's just, it's a very expensive system. Both at the individual and the city level.
Well, that's that's really interesting that you uh, didn't bring up um, just the construction cost, you know. So one of the things I always think about, because I'm I'm always coming at this from the housing perspective of um, you know, new new construction, new development and the parking requirements that go with it and the the exorbitant cost of every parking space. And uh, that has a huge impact on purchase price and rental prices. So there's that on top of like the maintenance of the cars and the registration fees. And I'm just finding out, actually, there's a lot of cost associated with just uh, buying a car, um, not not the, not the price tag, but um, my wife bought a car directly from somebody else and there was some issue with the title on the bill of sale and she's going through a bunch of rigmarole around um, the bureaucratic rigmarole, you know, and uh, cars, you know, cars require emissions tests, so that requires a a an appointment. And they require tags and the the yearly um, registration fees. And so that's more expense. And yeah, I mean, there's a lot of time and involved with going to mechanics and having them, you know, take you places. And yeah.
I'm glad you mentioned parking. Uh, I I should have said this before. I mean, that that's actually one of the bigger direct expenses. And there's a um, a researcher called Todd Littman, L I T M A N, who who has a number of recent um, papers on this sort of area. And he shows the um, the bar chart essentially of of transportation costs and and what we pay for with with cars. And parking and like the whole infrastructure around parking mandates and subsidizing parking is is one of the, is one of the biggest ones.
Well, I think um, uh, another way of looking at it is um, something I've often said is that we we incentivize housing in exactly the wrong ways by constraining supply and and um, encouraging demand. And um, subsidizing demand, in fact. And uh, I think we should not probably in general be in the business of um, trying to reduce demand, except to the extent that we don't need very large houses perhaps. But also, uh, I would, I would think one other uh, way of reducing the housing demand would be um, to provide car light neighborhoods or or covenant, covenant controlled neighborhoods where you you say, hey, this is when I, when I move into this neighborhood, I'm signing up for some kind of um, car light lifestyle, perhaps.
Love it. Love it.
Yeah, me too.
And and maybe if I could just add, this reminds me on the um, I I think I was making, I was kind of outlining a case for like why why transportation matters. And we were talking about affordability. There's a, there's a few others that maybe I'd not to speak too deep, but just just to kind of um, mention a few viewpoints. So another one, and I I could have said this first, but there's this just maybe in random order, is safety. And um, I I think um, I think that public safety is is one of the most important aspects of our transportation system that people don't tend to understand. And I think that the role of transportation in our overall public safety is something that is just really lost on most people. And it probably partly because of our, so our brains work, we just get used to um, things, certain things happening repetitively. But if you were to look at the annual coroner report for Boulder County, uh, which comes out each fall, you'd find that transportation, transportation is basically the number one thing to kill, likely to kill you after natural causes, suicide. So there was 30 some deaths. Uh, and then 20, 20 some deaths the last year and the year before. It's predictable. And at the national level, 42,000 something people die every year. Uh, it, you know, it varies a little bit each year, but it's basically the same thing that happens every year. It's designed in the sense that we know it's going to happen next year, uh, unless we make big changes. And um, there's an epidemic of traffic violence that you can see both in in general, there was actually, there was a, there was something out today, a a paper on in the US um, that that it's that it's spiking. And it's in general in terms of overall um, mortality from from cars crashing into people and killing them. But also specifically to people who are outside the vehicle, so namely bicyclists and pedestrians. And those people are um, you know, just that they they represent a a less white and less affluent um, demographic than people. I guess the general population is transportation users. It's an incredible equity issue. Um, we could, I guess, get into the reasons why that that happens and the specifics. But the point is, there's an incredible epidemic. It's it's getting worse, not better with with trans, with modern transportation technology. Cars are getting bigger, their lines of sight are getting poorer, they are getting faster. The infotainment systems that are taking away knobs are making it harder to um, harder to in interact and and they also cause more distractions. And then there's a greater reliance on, um, what's the word? It's indirect vision. So the use of screens as opposed to direct vision, um, which is more dangerous. So it like every level, um, this is a, it's 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 a murderous system. And in the US, we're five to 10 times more likely to die from a car crashing into us than in Europe. And we're four to five times more likely than in Canada. And so um, Canada, there there's a lot of myths about like, if Europe is really that different, but even if just setting that aside, Canada has a very similar, you know, structure in a lot of ways to the US. But they have made um, some key policy choices that are that are different. Um, and we can make those choices, too, if if we wanted to. And the, at the local level of policymaking, um, there there are significant opportunities. We have to, I mean, this is federal to in particular with with regulating um, the way that cars are designed. But there's an incredible opportunity for local governments to to make design improvements. And it's less at the level of I guess I would say with staff, and it's more at the level of the values decisions that elected leaders say we, what what we need to require and to make this a a political priority. So anyway, so that's safety. And then maybe just one other thing, I could do a whole list, but as far as like
Can I interrupt real quick?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, sorry.
When I think about safety, I think about um, you know, intersection configuration and protected bike lanes. Those are kind of top of mind. But I've also heard people, you 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 raised the the point about cars getting bigger. And I I would add heavier too, as they become, uh, they add giant batteries to them. And um, I've heard, I heard somewhere recently about the possibility of um, having your registration tax based on the car's weight rather than the car's value. How do you feel about that?
I mean, in principle, this is, this is a, this is a, uh, in in a category of like, I guess, is conceptually um, powerful ideas about 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 making the user pay for what they are currently, um, you know, the problems that they are creating. So yeah, I mean, the size, the size of the vehicle, the mass of the vehicle um, have an incredible impact on what our, what our local road programs have to to deal with, let alone the danger, you know, the little literal physical danger to people. So I think it's a great idea.
The other thing I think about, whenever I hear that statistic of 42,000 people dying in vehicular deaths, I always think about like, what, on average, how many people were each of those deaths, those people that died? How many people were they close to that that profoundly affects? Like 10, 20, 40? So when you multiply 42,000 times the number of people who were, whose lives were just profoundly changed by by those deaths and deaths in the family or deaths of a loved one, it's um, every year, you know, you know, it's it's really like um, um, sobering how we've, we've decided to just live with that, you know? And and how callous it is to to um, not prioritize changing this when we have so many people around us who are suffering profoundly from the loss that they've experienced or from the the, you know, and that's just, that's just the deaths, right? So how many people have been had there, have been injured and are dealing with pain, chronic pain or back injury or limited mobility because of of this? It's just really like, like you said, an epidemic.
I I think it's really well said. And I, in my experience, is most people have been touched by by tragedy, multiple tragedies. And and also not just, um, yeah, not just deaths, but uh, being rehabilitated. So and and, you know, just this weekend, people will may, I guess, I don't know when this will play, but it's what, August 2nd? Magnus White, uh, 17 year old cyclist, uh, died in Boulder. He was um, hit by a driver of a car. And he is part of the uh, international cycling team.
Tragic.
So um, I I know we were kind of, I don't know if you wanted to go any further on this, like, why transportation? But I I would just offer one other thing, which is um, you can keep going down the list, but just just imagine the, this kind of combines safe safety and and affordability and 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 just livability. Just imagine, do you know, whoever might be listening, do you know a a elementary school age kid? And can you imagine them just being able to leave by themselves, to leave their house and ride a bike to their to their school? And my guess is, if you, if you, if you know somebody and you can imagine them being mature enough to do it, you you're probably going to balk at the route that they would have to take. And you would say, that doesn't seem safe. And um, we, you know, we've, we've so fragmented our lives with with these roads that that people, that that kids, you know, they literally don't have the freedom to just go out and just move around like like, I think, is is they've been evolved to do. And in the real, I mean, really, the number one reason is cars. It's it's, if you imagine the cars not being there. So, you know, just our freedom, just our freedom of movement is is at stake here. And and we can fix this. We can, we can fix this. We um, other other countries and and cities and other places have done it.
It's so powerful to to think about giving kids freedom, you know, and and, you know, I I I grew up in a neighborhood that was dominated by cars, but before parents had realized how how quickly they were killing our children, you know, so, you know, I had, I had opportunities to show up at a ball field and kids gather. So, you know, I had, I had opportunities to show up at a ball field and kids gathered and we picked teams and we played organized sports, so to speak, completely unsupervised, you know? Basketball and hockey and baseball and all kinds of sports, you know? And we'd play kick the can in the backyards. And I don't know, I just, I want that for our, for our kids to, you know, be able to walk outside and meet other kids just through, just through moving through the city, you know? And right now, everything's so prescribed by the fact that everything revolves around cars taking kids everywhere. And I don't know, it seems, it seems like everything becomes scheduled and becomes, you know, this kid does that, this kid does that. And there's, there's very little organic sort of community building among children.
I think that's, that's well put. Let's, let's work on it. Let's find a, let's find a place to invest in some strategic, yeah, projects to try more of that, that, that vision right there.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Well, we have talked a lot about, did we get to the five things people should understand better about transportation?
I don't know if we did that per se. Maybe I'll give you my quick, I'll give you my quick version of it. So I just, I've been playing with, 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 I guess, like, policy ideas and political ideas for some time now. And I just, I find that often when people hear about transportation, their eyes glaze over because it's, it's, it's a lot of practitioners who've got their language and it's like, how do I make sense of all this? It's boring. And how do I, how do I plug in? So I do think for the average person, there's, there's maybe five things they might be interested in. So first is that one of the most important choices we make is how we design our transportation system. And we just gave the case, you and I are talking it through just just now about what, how much it affects, impacts our life. Directly impact, sorry, indirectly, life, life can be better with more diverse mobility options. And it's not the case that America is different. I won't go into that unless you want to spend time on that, but we, we, we can, we can do it here. The second thing is that our, our US transportation system, it's just not as serving as well as we could. It's underperforming versus what our, you can think of our peers doing, what is possible with the wealth that we have. The third thing is that.
I mean, I mean, just, just go stand at, one, one thing you could do to prove this to yourself is to stand on the roof of the Table Mesa Park and Ride and look out over foothills in US 36 during rush hour and just see seas of cars barely moving, you know?
That's right.
Every day of the week, you know? And so why, why we have car owners who are so vociferous about defending our right to drive everywhere probably stems from the fact that they're angry about all the sitting in traffic they're doing. I don't know, but.
I think you're right, though. I think you're on to something there that we have, we've collectively found ourselves in this scarcity mindset where it's stressful to go out in a car, it's, it's, it's no fun to be stuck and all the uncertainty with how, when you're going to get there, to loop, search for parking, it's trauma, people have had like, you know, they're varying degrees of trauma. Absolutely. I mean, people are angry. And like, I mean, I don't know about you, but I can find myself, I change a little bit going into the car. And it's just, it's like, it's designed for conflict. And part of the opportunity is to get cars off the road. So the people that want to be in their cars can be, and there's less traffic. Yeah. So I think it's a really good point.
I've rarely, I've rarely ever flipped off another cyclist like on a bike path. Like, happy man.
Totally. Okay. So should I keep going? I've got, I think there's three more on my list of five. Okay. So the, the third one is that the, the way that we choose to, to plan our transportation systems now is, is governed by political constructs, by like political compacts that electeds generally have the control of. And a lot of it is based on ordinances and laws that are decades old. So that's, that's what we have. That's what we keep going with in general. And number four is that.
You have to explain that to me just a little bit. So you're just, you're just pointing out the fact that the, the ordinances and the state laws, city, city ordinances, state laws, county, county, whatever, I don't know what counties pass. There, 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 we have, we have a kind of whole regime of transportation rules that are outdated. Is that kind of what you're saying or?
So it's, I would, I would say it's, 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 I maybe made two points here. The first one is to distinguish that it would be reasonable to think that, that we have our system, the system we have is the result of smart engineers and planners who have brought us to some like technical optimum and that, and that the opportunity to make things better is certainly with them to just, you know, use their great power of innovation.
Oh, yeah.
But the, but the fact is, the reason we have a monomodal system is because we allocate the rights, the privileges, the money and the space to a single mode of transportation. We've done that since the seventies, basically. So, you know, we used to have a lot more public transit in the US in the forties. By the seventies, the US federal, the DOT was spending, I think, like two thirds or more, maybe seventy plus percent of funding was all basically going to cars. And by now, it's, it's pretty much, it's the thing that we have to keep funding and maintaining. And then if there's anything left, the rest gets funded. But these are fundamentally budget, you know, political budgeting exercises. It's about the laws that we pass and the rights and the privileges. And I just, the second part of that is just to point out that this is decades old. There was just, I mean, just, just as an example, there was a, at the, at a TAB meeting recently, we were sort of talking about a parking policy that was being considered. And the discussion ended up centering on like, okay, so it seems like the, the limiting factor to this is that we have an ordinance from, I think it's nineteen eighty one, saying what we need to do about car parking. So it's, you know, twenty twenty three, climate change is, is looking pretty, pretty scary. And we haven't been able to do much about it. And so many other challenges, including our housing crisis. And yet we're talking about this ordinance. So we could change the ordinance, but it takes, but you know, engineers can't change the ordinance. It takes, it takes leaders who are talking about status quo change and, and making the case that we need to do things differently.
Nice, nice. So yeah, kind of top of, top of the list is parking requirements, I assume. But also as it relates to safety and reconfiguring for bicycles and transit.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair, that's a fair assessment. And then the last two, again, this is, so this is like the five points for the, the person who normally doesn't care about transportation, about why, what they might be interested in. The fourth one is that the change, change of the kind that you and I are talking about, have been talking about is possible, but the, the way that things, the way of doing things stays in place because it's just more convenient to let things ride. And I don't mean that to be, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I just more of like an observation. Like, it's not, it's not straightforward that, that like, you just do one or two things and then you fix this. It, it's, it's a package of, it's a package of things in which we have inertia. And, you know, like you talked about people idling at the school, like, I totally agree with you that that's, it's crazy. And to address it, you know, there, there needs to be, you need a strategy that involves not just the city, but the school district and with the principals and, you know, we have, we're resource scarce. And, and still, it's worth doing. It's, you know, I, I sort of think as a metaphor, it's a little bit like, at this point, just like discovering a plumbing leak and just like putting drywall over it and keeping it going. I mean, we are at the point in our, in our, in our, in our path as humans that like, we, we should be, we should be, or maybe Americans, but we should be, we should be digging a little deeper with respect to what we're doing with our building communities and our transportation systems. So that was the fourth.
And that's, it's actually a really positive, hopeful thing that, that a lot of these solutions are going to make our lives better, right? So it's not, it's not just about like tightening our belts and burning less carbon. Like, we, we want to move toward, towards like neighborhoods that are really beautiful, really fun to get around and, yeah.
We can be happier and healthier. That's what's on the table is being happier and healthier. And it's not, I think one of the misnomers that took, took me a while to understand is a non, like, transportation, like, I don't know what to call me, like, I wasn't trained as a transportation person, is that, I, I think it feels intuitive for most people that the transportation system that you see when you look out the door is fixed and like, you can't just change it. And if you wanted to, it would take forever. It's not true. We, we can, we can, we can do projects and change things. And when you do, when you do change infrastructure at a system level, change happens actually pretty fast. So it can take a long time, like, for, in terms of like a year or whatever, to like, do the project. Like, like that actually, you need to like build that in, but the actual longer term change can be, can be pretty quick.
The reason I laugh is because I'm just pathological about, when I walk through neighborhoods, I imagine what could be different and it drives me crazy, you know? Like, most, most people walk through a neighborhood and they say, this is, this is how it's always been. This is how it's always, it always will be. And, and to, to think creatively about how we could reconfigure forty foot wide streets, for example, in every residential part of town. Like, people don't have imagination around that. They, they just see it as a fixed infrastructure. And, and it's sort of like, well, what, how would you change this? Well, okay, here's what I would do. I would, I would make, make this particular street run one way and have a bike lane on the other side of the street. And it would be have a, have a little green space going down the middle, maybe one, only one lane of parking, you know? I don't know. This is the kind of stuff that I think about all the time. So I, I, I think part of it, imagining how you could change things is just, you know, breathing creative imagination into the discourse, you know? Like, here's a street that everyone hates. Let's talk about ways it could be really beautiful and functional.
I think that's right. That's right. And maybe one framework for transportation specifically, as far as like modes, is, is, is first, the actual allocation of space for the modes. And if you, if you suddenly have a couple of corridors creating a part of a new network where people have the physical space, that will get used. And we know this, it happens conversely when we expand highways is, you know, states do this over and over. We, they know better, we do it anyway. But you, you think, well, traffic is bad, let's, let's widen the highway. And then for a little while, like, that's, you've got more space, but then, but then it gets taken up through the concept of induced demand or the phenomenon of induced demand. And the same thing happens here. And if you just imagine a board, imagine like a big wide boardwalk now going from your house to like downtown. I mean, if you, if that just existed, it would obviously have, it would be full of people. So the infrastructure, the other part is just the economics. So, you know, we have all these economics programmed into how we think about things. And we, we don't, a lot of it is just not, it's not, it's not on our mind, but it's, it's, it's the time as well as what we spend money on. And just imagine like, if you, if you do a Google map right now and you wanted to go from somewhere north, north Boulder to south Boulder, and you looked at your modes, depending on what you were choosing, you might, it might take three times longer on, if you, if you chose the transit option versus the car option. And that's, that's another example of like, you just have to make the economics have parity. And then if you do, change will be, can be pretty quick.
Hey, this makes me think of something I, I had an idea about. This is pretty random, but I interviewed Darcy Kitching earlier this.
Yeah, I heard it. And he's great.
We did this, we, we talked about the slow marathon where we walked twenty six miles around Boulder. And then there's also a, a bike three sixty where you bike around Boulder, about the same distance. I think it'd be fun to have a kind of a, a self guided multimodal tour of Boulder where you, you know, you take the skip and hook up with a bicycle and you, you hop on a, a, a green Lime scooter and, I don't know, maybe take an Uber if you need the last, last couple of miles covered or something. I don't know, but.
I love it.
Yeah. Anyways, I think we ought to have a multimodal three sixty.
So I like that idea. I also, I also think about like, could we do something with transit and actually make, I mean, I don't know if this is a, a tour of current state or ideal state, but where you can actually take a bus to conveniently to like Rocky Mountain National Park from Boulder or to the bus staying, you know, the, the state's inner city network, but, but, uh, network of buses. I love it.
I, I, my, my daughter took the bus thing for the first time. It's the first time we've interacted with it. But I put her on a, a bus in Colorado Springs and a couple hours later, she was in Union Station. She walked across the floor to get on the FF1 and was home. And I didn't have to drive back and forth. It was kind of a long story, but anyways, bus staying is, is great and we should expand it.
Did she have a good experience?
Great. Yeah. Coach bus. Lovely.
Okay. I think we're on my fifth and final of my, my five things here. Okay. So, so the, the final, the final of the things people should know about transportation, according to Ryan, is that, is that the, the opportunity for improvement, for, for change, is, is really about system design more so than individual behavior change. But individuals have to say this is what they want at the ballot box or like at city council meetings, they have to come up and say this is what they're expecting. And maybe just to say one more on like the first part of that, that this is about system design, not individual behavior change. I have this kind of list of things that I, I feel like I'm often saying to people, no, no, but it's, it's not what you think. And like, one of those things is, I don't care if you drive, like, I, I, yes, I enjoy, I get a lot out of taking the kids around on a bike. But like, I, people, you do what you need to do, like, it doesn't matter. So it's not about, and, and, and by that same token, this, I think people have this sort of idea of like, when we say, well, biking is this big opportunity for greenhouse gas reduction, that it just means like them, it's like trying harder. And that's not the idea. The idea is.
This is not like, we're not, we're not going to convert people and like through, through, you know, Ryan, I've really been wanting to talk to you about your relationship with transportation, you know? And, and how you're burning too much carbon, you know? We're gonna like, it's gonna be like a big, you know, person to person influence campaign.
Yeah.
It's about systems that, that work well for different kinds of.
Hundred percent.
Modalities. Yeah.
Hundred percent.
I really appreciate this point because as someone who has like personally put a lot of heroic effort into, you know, heroic, quote unquote, it's been a lot of fun, you know, I get, I get something out of it. But, you know, I've put a lot of effort into changing my lifestyle around transportation. But just because I'm doing it with this current system, doesn't mean like, I feel like, oh, everyone, like, I feel like I'm in the moral high ground somehow. Like, it shouldn't be heroic to do, to do any, to make any of these choices around which kind of modalities you're going to use for transportation. Really, I mean, most people really ought to look at their finances and look at practically, practically where they need to go and walk out the door and do what's best for them. And so, yeah, we need a system that, that, that serves people who, you know, that makes, makes biking and transit the top choice when they walk out that door.
You, you nailed it. I totally agree with you. And I would, I would add that not only is the, if we can get this right, it's not only, you know, creating better infrastructure and systems, it's not only better for people who are inclined to bike, but it's better for drivers. And I know that if you look at it on a, on a road by road or a segment by segment basis, maybe that's a little hard to see. You say, well, it looks like this thing's going to slow me down. But, but if you could imagine the system, the whole system working better so that there's multiple layers of, of a true bike system and a true transit system over a car system, it's better for everybody, including the drivers. And not just as drivers, but as residents who are paying, paying taxes for, to make all this work.
Yeah. Well, one, one way to really think about that is if you imagine the forty people on a, on the blue Flatiron Flyer, getting out of that bus and driving a car each by themselves. I mean, if you just like, if you actually just like, stand on the side of US 36 and watch forty cars go by, they take up a lot of space, you know? And it takes a while for forty cars to go by. And, and every time you see one of those blue buses from a car, you can just be thankful. And instead of being angry at that bus, be thankful that there's not forty more cars on the road that you're sharing the road with. So that, that's like a very tangible way you can think about better systems, making it better for drivers.
I love that.
All right. Where are we now?
Housing. Can we talk about housing?
No, absolutely. Why is housing so important?
So, so just, just a few things. I, I think, I'm not a housing expert. I'm learning about transportation. And then I've, I've come to understand the relationship with land use. And this is a, this is a topic that people have a lot of, you know, thoughts about, opinions. And, and I think where my mind goes is what is, what does the science say? What are, what are the best science authorities say? If you are looking at climate science, you're pretty interested in what the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says. One of its headline messages, not just in transportation, but of all, of everything, is that the, one of the, the best ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and do so in a way that builds resilience and is equitable and builds us, moves us towards a just, just transition is to build more space efficient towns and to put a multimodal transportation grid on top of those towns. And if you just want to bring it down to Boulder now, so if you want. You want to understand our housing policy. I, I think from, from the way I look at the world, the best way to understand our housing policy is to go, I'm going to go to a roadside again that you, that close to thirty six, but go to Foothill Parkway and at about like nine AM on a weekday morning. and at about like nine AM on a weekday morning, where the overpass, there's a, there's a multi-use overpass at, at Pearl, uh, just over Pearl, um, just south of Pearl Parkway. And, and just sit there and just, and watch the cars, watch the tens of thousands, twenty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand cars coming into Boulder every day to go to jobs. And that's our housing policy. Our housing policy is we don't have room for, for, for more people to live here. Our population has been steadily declining, city of Boulder. But, by the way, I just talked to a neighbor yesterday and very, very short of it, she said something like, oh, what's the, what do we have to do, like a hundred and sixty-five thousand feet? She's all, it's just the development. I said, we're literally depopulating and.
Despite the, despite new units.
Yeah, and our system are, we have three to five hundred students leaving the Boulder Valley School District each year, specifically like punctuated in Boulder and then especially punctuated in the west part of Boulder where houses are most expensive. We have a, we have a workforce shortage in Boulder. And this is our housing policies because we don't, we don't let people live here. We don't, we don't create enough housing. And I, I care about this with a, a climate or I guess a climate land because basically the equation for, for greenhouse gas emissions in transportation is its number of miles traveled by the energy or whatever unit of pollution per mile, and then allocate that to the number of people in the vehicle. And that miles traveled, um, component is a fundamental part of the calculation. And it is expensive, from an energy and a climate standpoint and the financial one, to have everybody have these, you know, three, three, four ton, two, three, four ton vehicles that have to move around. And, and by the way, if you're, if you're in a car going, traveling locally, you're spending ninety-five percent or more of the energy just to move the mass of the vehicle. And only, you know, half of our trips.
Your body's five percent of the weight of the, of the car.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the total.
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's an expensive way to, to, to use energy. And it's one of the most fundamental ways to improve it. So that's, that's like, I guess, how I would say from a Boulder perspective, why our authoritative body on climate science tells us that building, uh, space efficient cities is more important. Or sorry, not more important, but, um, is, is important.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. Lots, lots to say about that, but I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
Can I, can I add what, sorry, just since you're thinking, there's another key part of this, which is what we're, one thing we're leaving on the table as we do this is all of the people coming in with the cars, circulating, looking for parking, those are people who are not paying, uh, property taxes or they're not paying local fees, they're not, they're not paying to fund our system locally. And, and that's what's on the table is, 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 um, letting people live here who can be a part of developing our, our resources to build an amazing multimodal system with great tree canopy and like all the, all the wonderful things. That's, that's what we leave on the table.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of, I remember what I was thinking about, like, we, we touched on e-bikes earlier. Now we're talking about people driving single occupancy vehicles. And when you just sort of compare the, the raw power, uh, consumption of these two modalities, a person on an e-bike versus, you know, going, going five miles versus a person in a single, in a car going twenty miles, it's, it's, um, it's crazy.
Yeah, that's right.
It's like, no wonder the planet's burning.
That's right. That's right. And for one comparison, I know you thought, I forgot if which, which podcast you talked about it, but you, maybe it was the one with Nicole, but anyway, yeah, on the kilowatt hour, the energy usage of e-bikes. Um, it's interesting to compare an e-bike to an electric car as well. I mean, it depends on the model of the bike and the model of the car, but they're, they're an order of magnitude, you know, ten or twenty times, um, just from an energy perspective, more efficient. Or, or they could be a hundred times if, if it's one of the big.
Say, yeah, two orders of magnitude for a, an all EV car, you know, like a Tesla. I think the battery capacity is a hundred times. And then you, and then you go, you go another order when you buy a, one of those Ford F-150s.
Yeah, that's right.
Batteries. It's crazy. All the e-bikes you could buy with, build with, with one of those Fords. All right, so, uh, we're, we're, we're working our way through a ten point outline here. We're on number.
Whatever you want to do is fine, Phil. They're just.
Also, I guess, I guess I would say, as you look at the, at those final three, we've, we've covered a fair bit, but is there something in particular that, uh, you want to, um, you want to say that you haven't yet?
I think, um, thanks for the opportunity. I think, uh, um, so Shay, Shay Castle interviewed me, um, recently. And she said, you know, I, I tell each of the candidates, I give them a critique. It'll give them a chance to respond. And, um, and I guess, I guess what she was going to say, and it, and it was, and it was something like, gosh, you're pretty focused on climate station, like, is that, is that really, is that really? From a, from a, you know, a, a city council candidate standpoint. And, um, what I told her was, well, two things. One, climate, or I guess, let's say, transportation and housing is, is, is one of the most important things that you, that, that affect your quality of life as a resident. And, um, we should have multiple experts on our city council who are working on this as both like technical, um, I guess, authorities, but also as changemakers. Like, working on a status quo change and change management and looking for places to make big changes. Because there's not, it's not happening. It's not happening. None of this is happening unless you have elected bodies that are working in. So that's the first, that's the first thing. And I, and I wish we had more candidates. Oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I also don't feel like, um, every candidate, every city council person has to have the same profile of expertise and this, and completely overlapping interests in terms of what the, the, the highest priority should be.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. And I, and I mentioning Shay, just be, I think it's a good question. I think it's, I guess, I guess it's a, it's a critique I'd like to speak to because I think it's an important, I guess, sort of a point. So I, I hope that more people out there who care about this, that care about transportation and housing options and climate action, will, will, will get excited about running, if not this session, the next one. And like, we, we need, we need political change, changemakers. So that's the first part of it. The second part of the answer is, um, there, there is so much that housing, transportation and climate teach, uh, as, as far as governing and governing well. We should, we could talk about safety. I mean, safety, safety, public safety is one of the most important things we have to deal with. And just like a quick little thing about public safety is, uh, that, that transportation teaches us is, is in the US, we have the system that is very enforcement led. I mean, it's literally police hiding behind bushes, waiting for people to come speeding on roads that are designed to go fast. And, um, and we have the deadliest transportation system in the world.
This reminds me, it's, it's like what I said earlier. It's like, Ryan, I've been wanting to talk to you about your relationship with speeding on the, on the roads, you know, like, this is.
Yeah.
It's also going to be a big moral, you know, influence campaign where, where we're going to have safety by influence.
Right.
Ridiculous.
So, so the, the, the countries that have, in which you are much less likely to be killed by a driver running into you in a car are countries that have infrastructure that, that, first of all, separate cars from people walking and biking, but that also create a, a, a self-incentive for drivers to just not go as fast. So there's less, there's less width, um, the lines of sight force you to pay more attention. And there's more, there's more physical infrastructure between you and wherever you might move the car to. And, um, there's, there's more to it than that, but it's, this is one of the, the key parts of design, of the system being designed for safety. And so what you get is, is safety. And it's, it's safer for the drivers, it's safer for the pedestrians and cyclists, it's safer for the highway patrol and, and the, the law enforcement that are, that are out there trying to do things. It's a much more cost effective way to get things done. And so I think, I think what we know about trans, safety and transportation, which again, is one of the deadliest overall, um, problems we have as a society, teaches us, it teaches us what we can, things that we can bring else, elsewhere to other issues. And I'm frankly excited to, to talk about public safety and, and get, get back based and outcome focused on it. There's a couple of other points on livability, inclusion that I, that, you know, we could, that we could do more with, through being, through, through being taught from transportation and housing, that I'll, I'll leave it at that and just say, you know, you can, my website will be up at some point in August and, uh, after I file and you can look for it there.
That's cool. Well, I wanted to say one more thing about your focus on climate, um, action and, and worrying about, um, climate change. Because, um, one of the, the major narratives in Boulder about that's pushing back on housing and development and growth in general is just has to do with like, hey, humans need to, to cut back our activities and be less intensive and less, uh, demanding of the earth. And, um, I think it's important that your, your message talks about how, yeah, I mean, all those things are true on this, on kind of on the surface, but, um, but we've done a lot of sprawl and a lot of, uh, low intensity development all over the earth. And, and it makes sense for us to have more intensive, more compact, environmentally friendlier. You know, when you, when you put the whole system together and you think about total miles traveled and carbon consumption and shared walls and insulation and this kind, you know, like, this is good for the planet. You know, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
Good for the planet is not just maintaining my garden in my single family home zone thing. It, there's, there's more to it than that.
Such an incredibly important point. And I, and I think even from the, it, generalizing beyond climate, um, if you sort of think about two modes of, of development, what, what, where one is, you, you build things, you let people live near one another and then enjoy, uh, more of an unspoiled, untrammelled, um, natural system when they visit it versus we make, we make it, uh, difficult and expensive for people to live near one another. So they just sort of like move out into the forest. That is, that fragments our natural lands, um, it, it, it takes away the public, just pub, public space and public use. So just from like a general standpoint, those are the kind of modes that you have to think about. And then, of course, with climate specifically, the efficiency of, the energy efficiency of that, of that sprawl pattern is just incredible. And you can look at it and say, well, we don't want growth here, but the people still exist. And so you're de facto, um, sending people off on a, a more high impact, uh, development pathway when you say they, they can't live here.
Yeah, yeah. Ryan, thank you so much for, uh, your time today and for stepping us through, uh, the issues. Did, did we get to everything that you?
I think we're pretty good, except I, I missed, I wanted to do a disclaimer at the beginning, maybe the, the ending point. The end is a good place to, to sort of say it, um, which is, I am just so incredibly impressed by the work of our city's staff, our transportation staff. And I, one of the things that makes me excited about running for council is the chance to, to provide more support and resources and leverage to help them do their jobs well. And this whole conversation has been, I, it's probably been implied, but I'll just say it like, I, I, I think this is all very interesting. And so I'm talking at, you know, kind of an abstract level about the changes, you know, from a policy advocacy standpoint that I'd like to make societally. And I think the big job that, that, who needs to catch up is our, is our elected, or is our elected leadership. And I don't mean just the city of Boulder, I mean, other cities, I mean, you know, state and on up. And I think that the, at the political elected level, this, this is where we have some of the most exciting opportunities. And, um, I just look forward in whatever capacity, continuing to work with our, our incredible staff who are like the, the key, the key to this, to our, to our possible future. So I think that, I think that, that was it.
That's great. Well, thank you for your service on Transportation Advisory Board. And, um, I want to echo what you said, that I, I, um, I definitely like critical of our transportation infrastructure in Boulder, and I want to see it improved by leaps and bounds. But I'm also really just super thankful and grateful for what we have so far and, um, our ability to bike, uh, around town as well as we can, even though it's, it's not perfect. It's a lot better than a lot of other North American cities. And so I'm grateful and I'm optimistic. And, um, I really appreciate your, your focusing on, on these issues around transportation, climate action, housing. It's awesome.
Likewise to you, Philip. Uh, you're, uh, you're, you're, you're a big part of this movement as well. And I appreciate all the work you do. So thanks for having me on. Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com/philipogren, which you can find by DuckDuckGoing, Linktree, Philip Ogren, or by visiting sharingboulder.us, where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogren, and the music was created by Nathaniel Ogren and SAC Lunch. Keep sharing Boulder.